All right, we are reconvening from closed session. I'd like to make the following closed session disclosure. By a 5-0 vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the cases of Thandi v. the City of Elk Grove and Aslam v. the City of Elk Grove and Velazquez v. the City of Elk Grove as identified by the case numbers listed on the City Council agenda. And we will now adjourn the special meeting. It is 6:06 PM. And now I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, March the 10th, and it is 6:06 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen. Consistent with executive orders N-29-20 and N-35-20 issued by the Governor of the State of California, this meeting will be conducted by teleconference only, meaning location will be the City Council chamber, but it will not be open to the public. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, March 12th at 1:00 PM and Wednesday, March 17th at 6:00 PM. There's being closed caption and it'll be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking and in the new Zoom environment that we are in currently. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may be necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. In our new Zoom environment, we will be displaying a speaker timer for those that are participating in the Zoom environment through teleconference with video and audio capabilities. But for those that call into the meeting, which is an option in the Zoom environment, we will continue to have the audio displays. So after those first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound for those who are callers that call in who inform that one minute remains. And when the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound for those audio callers coming in direct via phone line. With that, Mayor, that will turn us over to the roll call if we're ready for that. As all of our teleconference meetings, we do roll calls and also I'll vote through a kind of call and response. I'll start off with the roll call with Councilmember Spees.
President.
And Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. Did you get me?
Indeed.
Okay.
Take us on to
All right.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
We have the Pledge of Allegiance and leading us in the pledge this evening is Councilmember Spees.
Please stand and face the flag, which should be presented here in a moment.
I'm working on it. Sorry about this.
We will get there.
That's not going to do it either. Hold on. Hitting the wrong buttons. Oh, it didn't. Hold on, everyone. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. Hand over heart pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I would like for all of us to join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next item.
Take us on to Section 2, the approval of the agenda.
All right, can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
Moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second.
And with that, we'll move to the roll call vote. That will start with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Suen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Yes.
The agenda will pass 5-0. As we proceed, Section 3 of the closed session, we have no closed session items. So that will take us on to Section 4, our presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is the Mayor's Volunteer Awards for 2020.
All right, excellent. Thank you. One of the honors I have as mayor is to recognize Elk Grove residents who volunteer their time and talent to make Elk Grove a better place to live. Our annual Mayor's Volunteer Awards honors volunteers in six different categories. Due to the pandemic, last year's program was never presented, and I have the honor to present the winners. In addition to the honorees, we will recognize tonight, the selection committee recognized five other individuals with an honorable mention to acknowledge their dedication and outstanding contributions they have made in our community. Those receiving an honorable mention include my dear friend Akram Kaval. Very excited. Jack Kerwin, Michael Lloyd, Katzy Kazenza, and Caitlin Riley. We congratulate you all and recognize your tremendous contributions in our community. Now let me share our 2020 Mayor's Volunteer Award winners. Residents, neighborhoods, and community groups. The winner is Sophia Sherman, nominated by her beloved husband Lee Sherman. Sophia was one of the original City Council members and served from 2000 to 2012. She was mayor from July 2003 to December 2004 and again in 2010. She served as vice mayor four times. She is a passionate advocate for Elk Grove veterans, and she participates and speaks at the annual American League She held a Memorial Day flag giveaway for 15 years. She helped start the Elk Grove Veterans Day Parade, served as the president of the parade committee, and she was instrumental in the development of Elk Grove Veterans Hall at District 56. At this time, I would like to recognize former mayor, vice mayor, and councilwoman Sophia Sherman. This is the type of plaque that we will be presenting, and I believe we have Ms. Sherman on the line.
Ms. Sherman, you should be able to unmute your line now.
Okay, there I am.
You do have a bit of an echo.
Does it sound okay?
That's sounding great. You're now coming through loud and clear. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. All I can say, I am humbly excited about accepting this honor, and I'd like to share it this evening with three other women. First of all, my mother-in-law, Esther Sherman. She was not a Rotarian, but she practiced surface service above self. She visited the sick and sometimes would sit and read to the children and even do some ironing. Second person is my mother Ruth. She inspired me to look for ways to remove both obstacles and/or challenges that people with special needs faced every day of their lives. For example, audible signals for the blind and a park without boundaries. Third, my grandmother Maria. She could not bear to see so many hungry people in her community that she took it upon herself to feed as many as she could. She didn't care if they were the homeless or someone just down on their luck. She just knew that they were hungry. I'm so grateful to have these three women in my life who taught me to help others when I see the need. Again, I thank you so very much for this honor. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Well-deserved recognition. Thank you for your service to our community. All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
In the category of social and community services, our winner is Mike Vandepoel, nominated by Angela Roberts. Mike has been devoted to serving Elk Grove seniors. Mike has been a volunteer driver for the Meals on Wheels program for many years. For many participants of the program, Mike is the only person they see or talk to all day, and he makes an effort to ensure that he provides more than just a meal. Mike's retirement days have been filled with services to service to seniors, volunteering for his church and service projects as an Elks Lodge member. Do we have Mike on the line?
We do not. This is Angela Roberts. I'm the marketing and outreach coordinator for Meals on Wheels Sacramento. And unfortunately, Mike is very grateful to the City of Elk Grove and everyone, you know, for recognizing years of his hard work with us. Someone who would like to speak is the volunteers, our volunteer services specialist, Robin Smith. She works closely with Mike Vandepoel and will, would like to say a few words on his behalf. Robin Smith, go ahead.
I'm Robin Smith with Meals on Wheels. Mike wanted to send his regrets that he could not attend today. He greatly appreciates the honor, and he just wanted to let you know how much it meant to him. Mike honestly is, he's one of our all-stars. He knows his participants inside and out. He advocates for them, and he really is, like the application said, he's that smiling face that they get to see every day. Especially with COVID, that's become even more just needed and wanted by his participants. They adore him, and he's my go-to person. There's never a time where I haven't, where I've called him and he said, no, he can't do something. I can call him 10 minutes before a shift starts that just opened up. He'll always be there, and he's always volunteering to take on extra routes afterwards. So I know that my job personally would be a lot harder without Mike, and he definitely, he's wonderful. That's all I have to say. He's amazing. He deserves it.
Thank you. Thank you for those wonderful words. Congratulations, Mike, for serving our community, and you'll be getting an award similar to this one. So thank you again for your contributions to our community. Next, in the category of arts, culture, and heritage, the winner is James Tabucci. Tabucci or Tabuki? I think it's Tabucci. Nominated by Kathleen Baker-Gum, oh boy, Baker-Gum-Preck Davies. This is why I know teachers have it hard. After Jim's retirement in 2005, he turned his knowledge and skills to serving the Elk Grove community through volunteerism. He became the program director for the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce's Catalyst Leadership Development Program and sits on the Board of Directors of the American Leadership Forum. In 2011, the Sacramento Mandarin's Drum and Bugle Corps approached Jim to take over as their corps director. Under his leadership, the Mandarin's Drum and Bugle Corps became one of 24 drum corps, drum corps in the United States to complete the World Class Division of Drum Corps International, otherwise known as DCI. In 2015, with the loss of music programs in local schools, Jim proposed making Mandarin's music programs the pregame and halftime performers for Bayside Baptist Church. The group has been featured on local television programs, including Good Day Sacramento, KVIE, Rob on the Road, and KCRA, and has provided entertainment for the Sacramento Republic Soccer Team, NASCAR, the Oakland Raiders, Baker Elementary Special Olympics Rotary Club, Sacramento Pride Parade, LGBT Equality, Healthy Minds Matter, Grants Advisory Board for Youth, otherwise known as GAVI, and many others. In 2017, Jim was voted Drum Corps International Director of the Year. In his spare time, Jim is also the director of Organization Development for Kaiser Permanente's South Sacramento Area. Congratulations, James Tabuki. Is he available?
Tabucci.
Tabucci. Is James available?
Jim, you can unmute your line.
Thank you. Yes, this is Jim Tabucci. So yes, my name is pronounced Tabucci, kind of like the Italian, Italian version, although I'm Japanese-American. I just want to say thank you to you, Mayor, and also to the City Council for this recognition. I really am receiving this award on behalf of dozens of volunteers for the Mandarin's. We are principally a volunteer organization, even though we are a fairly large nonprofit organization at this point. We've really made it our emphasis to maintain and build our connections within the community, principally through a lot of the things that we do in education. We started up a program that is really getting music education back into elementary schools, and I'm really proud to say that, you know, over the past few years, we've been able to build up that part of the program. We're now serving over 1,000 kids around our region. And this is back from, you know, when I started off, back with the organization, serving about 100 kids. So we've really made that 10x contribution towards serving our community. And this is really done with all the volunteers throughout our organization. I don't receive any pay, but I like to say that I'm very well rewarded in that I get paid basically in smiles and thank yous from our participants, mostly our students. I also want to thank my wife, Joanne, who has always been by my side throughout all of my volunteer endeavors, and she's there every step in the way with me and support. I'd also like to thank my mom, Alice Tabucci. She's kind of a rock star now. She was just featured on CBS 13. But she's the one who gave me a trumpet when I was 10 years old, and she started me on this path of music and music education, and it's had such a big impact on my life. I'd also like to recognize all of our music educators who are out there. These are the people who are in class. They're trying to teach remotely through Zoom and trying to teach and keep art, performing arts alive in our community. They are really, it's very difficult for them, and any support that we can give them as a community, they are the ones who are really pouring their hearts out to keep music education in the schools and to keep the arts alive for the kids. So on behalf of all of these people, I warmly and thankfully accept this award. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. And as a longtime supporter for visual and performing arts, I know the tremendous value arts education provides for our students. As a former trustee for Elk Grove Unified School District, proudly led the effort to not only increase funding, but also creating a new position for a VAPA director. So thank you for all the work that you do, and I couldn't agree more. Visual and performing arts is an invaluable curriculum for our students. So thank you again for your contributions.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Just want to say congratulations, Alfie.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate it.
If I knew all you have, that would have been so much easier. Did you want to say something, Councilmember Suen, before I move on?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just saying ditto is another Alfie. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Congrats, Jim.
Thank you, Darren.
All right, moving on to our next category in the category of sports and recreation, the winner is Kimberly Hetrick, nominated by Project Ride. Kim serves as the board president at Project Ride. The organization provides therapeutic horseback riding lessons to special needs children and adults. Kim has been involved on the board for over 15 years and has been the board president for several years now. She gives tirelessly to their cause by spearheading monthly board meetings and actively participating in several fundraisers throughout the year while balancing a professional career and raising a family. Not only does Kim give generously of her time, but she also makes a financial impact with her personal donations and by rallying friends and family to contribute, to contribute, which allows the organization to continue their mission. Congratulations, Kimberly. Do we have Kimberly on the line?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor. Thank you.
The floor is yours, Kimberly. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say thank you so very much for selecting me as recipient for this amazing award. I'm not only honored, but also deeply humbled to have been nominated and selected. Volunteering at Project Ride has been a privilege and a joy for me and my family. Serving our unique and special riders with other amazing volunteers and outstanding staff has been one of the most rewarding things I have had the pleasure of doing in my lifetime. I know you spoke on this, reading the submission there, Mayor, but I also said for those that may not know about Project Ride, we're a nonprofit organization founded in 1979, providing therapeutic horseback riding to children and adults with special needs. It's a magical oasis for our riders, and it's their very own special place. It's an organization that started here and stays heavily rooted within the Elk Grove community. I also want to give a special thanks to Tina Calancini, our executive director, for being my inspiration and support. She has been the backbone of Project Ride for over, or almost 20 years. Once again, thank you for this award, but my true honor will be to continue serving our special riders at Project Ride. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you again for all your contributions to our community. Next up in the category of service organizations and groups, the winner is Elk Grove Quilt Guild, nominated by Sue Martin. Elk Grove Quilt Guild was founded in 1998 to preserve the heritage of quilting, promote the exchange of ideas among people interested in quilting, improving the skill levels of members, and contributing to the welfare of the community. Their service projects contribute quilts, pillowcases, Christmas stockings, and financial contributions to Elk Grove organizations such as Chicks in Crisis, Windsor Elk Grove Care and Rehabilitation Center, Elk Grove Food Bank, and many others. The Elk Grove Quilt Guild has provided quilts to veterans in our community as part of a national program covering service members and veterans touched by war with comforting and healing quilts of valor. Their handmade works thank others for their unselfish sacrifice for our country. Wow, that's quite amazing. Do we have Elk Grove Quilt Guild with us?
Karen, you should be able to unmute your line now. It looks like you're unmuted, Karen, but we can't hear you if you're speaking.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm, our quilt guild is honored. And I'm like speechless. Anyway, we do try to help the City of Elk Grove, and I just wanted to read a letter that was sent to us from the Elk Grove Unified School District Board of Education on February 23rd, 2021. Express, they said, this dear Ms. Moore, who is our community service person who gets all the different quilts and pillowcases. She coordinates it to donate to different places, and we donated, we donated on behalf of the Elk Grove Unified School District students blankets and pillowcases to provide them much-needed support for the students. Prairie Safe Center serves elementary schools in the Valley, Laguna, and Franklin region of the Elk Grove Unified District. And they just thanked us, and I would also like to personally thank you for giving us this award because 2020 has been a hard year. We've been doing all our community service. We've had to do it remotely, but we've come together as a group, and we have 69 members, and we thank you very much for this award. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations for all the tremendous work you do in our community. In the category of Young Volunteer of the Year, the winner is Neha Thandi, nominated by Hajo Lasher. Neha is a kind-hearted young woman with empathy, compassion, and unmatched motivation to help people and the community at large. She actively looks for ways to help those in need and never shies away from a challenge. Neha's exemplary leadership, tireless dedication to service, and volunteerism, commitment to the people of our community, has made many outstanding contributions to the Elk Grove community. Neha has been involved with the Girl Scouts of America for the past 10 years, and as a Girl Scout, she has earned the Silver Award and is working towards earning the Gold Award, which is the highest honor that can be bestowed upon a Girl Scout. For the Silver Award project, Neha noticed women are significantly underrepresented in the fields of science, technology, engineering, and math, STEM. She has reached out to younger girls and taught them about STEM, including the role women play in STEM fields along with the importance of women empowerment and gender equality issues. Neha presented to local fourth and fifth graders. Neha reached out to various organizations that advocate for women's rights, including Girls Up, founded by the United Nations Foundation in 2010. Girl Up works to achieve gender equality around the world. Neha was so inspired by Girl Up's mission for gender equality and social change that she founded the local chapter of Girl Up at Franklin High School in 2019. She organized a donation drive to help support My Sister's House, a local organization, and held an event called Donuts and Donations, where she and other members collected, sorted, and distributed items to My Sister's House. Neha worked with Vice Mayor Stephanie Nguyen to plan a leadership conference in the spring titled "The 2020 Female Focus." The conference included a panel of female professionals and addressed topics such as gender equality in the workplace, pay disparity, women's rights, and the health and welfare of women. Neha also holds leadership roles on various commissions. She is currently an officer on the Kasuna's Community Services District, Team Action Committee, and an Associate Student Body Commissioner at Franklin High School. Neha is also a member of the Franklin High School Seek Honor Society. Neha takes pride in being a citizen of Elk Grove. She has made a meaningful contribution to our community through her leadership, volunteerism, and dedication to many worthy causes. Let's give it up for Neha, with a tremendous accomplishment at such a young age already. Is Neha with us?
Ms. Tandy, you can unmute your line if you like.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and Councilmembers. I would like to thank you for this recognition and award. I am proud to serve this community, and I will continue to work hard to make an impact on the youth through projects I am passionate about. Giving back to my community is something I have loved since I was in elementary school, and I plan to continue giving back and inspiring others to do the same. I am humbled and honored for this recognition, and I look forward to working with council and the members of the community on future projects. Thank you.
Congratulations, Neha, and just well-done work. Thank you. Got a future president or senator right there. At this time, I would like to thank Sophia Sherman, Mike Vandepoel, James Tabucci, Kimberly Hetrick, Elk Grove Quilt Guild, and Neha Thandi for your significant impact on the quality of life you're making in our city. You can pick up your award from City Hall. Nominations are currently being accepted for this year's program. If you know of a deserving individual you would like to nominate to receive one of these awards, please go to our website, where you can find more information and complete the nomination form online at www.eltgrovecity.org/award. And that concludes our presentation. We will move on to our next item.
And that will take us on to Section 5, our public comment. And for our members of the participating audience who are viewing our meeting, thank you for watching, and you'll see a little bit of a different environment as we are going on this evening, as we've switched over from what was previously the Microsoft Teams environment over to the Zoom environment. And up there, I have some instructions, which I'll go to in a little bit. But per usual with our Section 5 of Public Comment, participating members of the viewing audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment till the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. And part of what we'll be encountering and for the, uh, education for the council, we did receive two written comments prior to the meeting. But as we proceed through this process, for those that are participants in the Zoom environment, there is a raise hand function. And what we're going to be asking is as we have these opportunities for public comment, you as the members of the public and participating public can use the raise hand function now, which will put you into the queue, and then what our staff will do is unmute participants and we'll move through the line of those wishing to speak. After we're done with a particular section, such as section five, we won't have another public comment opportunity till the consent calendar. So I'll be using the function to lower all hands until we get to that section of section eight for the consent calendar and we'll ask our participating members to, um, uh, hop into the meeting if you do have comments for particular sections. For right now, if you are interested in participating in our general public comment, hit that raise hand button that'll put you into the queue. And I don't believe we have anyone calling in, but if we did have any callers that came in while I'm not viewing, I just want to remind folks that when you're on a phone, you can press star nine and that will activate the, uh, raise hand function for you. Uh, what we'll also be doing, it's a little bit different, is that you will see the speaker timer displayed up on the screen as we pull our, our callers into the environment. And it looks like we have a lot of folks signing up, so I appreciate it. Thank you for everyone for getting into the lineup and, uh, we will start the process of pulling in speakers.
Bertha Sheik, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I think I like this Zoom session a lot better, or at least we get to see the faces of the people, some of the people who are talking. Anyway, I'm here today. We are facing repercussions of a power-induced racism that has now worsened the attack on Asian Americans. Bobby Allen started a divisive culture in Elk Grove. Never in the last thirty years have I ever seen Elk Grove spiral to where it has. Bobby Allen says, "All are welcome to the table." Her associates are applauded as you witnessed today, but what about the people that he has been ignoring? I asked Bobby, "Why don't you have a mayor page? Why do you hide behind a personal page and continue to block people? Why have you not apologized to the entire Mong community? I want to know whether you acknowledge that your hate and the Omai grill attack and worsening of hate crimes has anything to do with you? Do you take responsibility? How on earth do you block the people of Elk Grove and pretend you don't see them while you look at another section and applaud them? What about your lies about the court-certified translator? Any accountability for that? How about your merciless attack to hurt the Mong Kong Lee? You know, to making him out to be some kind of a dangerous citizen for putting gun, uh, dove-hunting guns? If I, if it was my child, you would be hearing from me, dang it. And then your associates Jackie Chung puts pictures of my children that you endorse. Why? And you claim to be a parent and understanding of families? No wonder you failed so miserably as a trustee. Because even there, you forgot to apologize after showing blatant racism. I know you're tired of hearing my voice. You've sent some people to try and threaten me. You and your associates have mercilessly attacked me, defamed me, did everything in your power just because I asked a valid question. My question when I asked you what took you eight years to attack Steve Lee? Raised the ruckus that you have created on the social media to try and attack me. Well karma showed you the truth. All those things that you used to defame me, my case was dismissed. And that's God's answer to people with integrity. You know, Jake Rambo almost attacked a couple Asian couple and ran over an eight-year-old. Stephanie Nguyen ignored a hundred voices that called in. I have witnessed all of this. I'm not here to pick on you, Bobby Allen. I have no bone against anybody, but when I see wrong, I want to call it out. It's been ninety days and I watch you mercilessly ignoring the whole sector of people in Elk Grove. Today you were handing out balloons like you didn't care for that section of the community that are actually hurting. They have asked you for an apology time and again. I have witnessed it. I have asked you for it because I believe you owe them an apology. I even said, "I'm ashamed to call you an..." But anyway. I hope you find.
Thank you for calling in, ma'am. Have a good evening.
Jason, the timer, there we go. Kathy Ismi, you may unmute your line and begin. You have three minutes.
For nine months, we have given you an opportunity to redeem yourself and you have failed. You have allowed your pride to consume you from doing the right thing and you have politicized our complaints and you have been ignoring our calls and recalls. Please do us a favor and resign as mayor or face a recall.
Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for calling. Have a good evening.
Sharon Anderson, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor Singh Allen and Vice Mayor Nguyen and the rest of the city council. I just wanted to draw attention to our Elk Grove Anti-Trush Cleanup, that event that will be happening in, uh, in council member Nguyen's district along the Franklin Creek Trail and surrounding areas this Saturday at ten AM. As you probably are aware, if you follow our Facebook page, we've done a lot of cleanups and we've had some awesome volunteers. We are now at about ninety strong that have signed up, uh, overtime and, uh, we're looking forward to making a difference in, on the Franklin Creek area. Just wanted to let you all know. So if you want to come on out, we would love to see you. That's it.
Thank you, Sharon.
Lincoln Remington, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Last summer, Bobby Singh Allen racially targeted the Mong community. After the, the hate that she stirred up against us, Bobby now wants to pretend like she isn't an anti-Asian racist. But her racism against the Mong led a good friend of hers almost to run me over. When he drove his car up a walkway where I was standing, in that moment, I was scared for my wife. Even though I've reported this to the police, they refused to do anything about it. It makes me wonder if Bobby is colluding with the police to protect her friend. Bobby, even though I'm only eight-year-old, I am old enough to know that you are not the kind of leader that our city needs. Your hate can no longer be tolerated. You are racist. And I am joining my voice with others to demand that you step down as mayor of Elk Grove.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Mia Foster, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. As an Asian-American woman, I've seen hate up close and personal. After the attack on the Mong community by Bobby, the Asian community was targeted by her supporters and associates. Since July two thousand twenty here in Elk Grove, Asians have been scapegoated and have been victims of crime, including vandalism, robbery, physical, verbal assault, and online harassment. Her close friend almost ran my eight-year-old son over with his vehicle. We are on high alert. The recent surge in hate crimes against my fellow Asian-Americans stems from scapegoating the community for both the coronavirus and the hate that Bobby launched against us. Innocent Asians from various countries of origin are being attacked, beaten, and assaulted. It is heartbreaking to see videos of our elderly being brutalized. I co-founded Elk Grove Mong Americans when Bobby labeled our culture controlling and intimidating. She stereotyped the Mong community as gangs. She racially profiled us. She slandered me on live TV. She appropriated our language. Her racial attacks were a wake-up call for me to be a part of the process and to work to teach our community about the Mong culture to create greater awareness, tolerance, and acceptance. I've led and participated in marches and rallies and I now speak up when I see communities under attack because of their race, orientation, faith, culture, and more. I strongly denounce the anti-Asian attacks on our community as it is an attack on humanity and that is why I am denouncing Bobby Singh Allen as mayor. Bobby, tonight I'm calling in to ask that you resign from your position as mayor of Elk Grove. The hate you instigated against the Mong community, especially during a time when Asians were already being attacked and targeted, renders you undeserving of the seat you currently sit in. Although they did not publicly announce it, CSD Director Jacqueline Moreno has distanced herself from you during the election for a reason. She's made it clear she did not endorse you for mayor because she recognizes that you are wrong. I spoke to Sacramento City Councilmember Mai Vang around August two thousand twenty. She personally told me that what you said about the Mong community was troublesome and ignorant. You clearly do not know the Mong culture. She said you text her asking for an endorsement, but she purposely ignored you because she did not want to endorse a racist. Since you value the words of elected women so much more than you do the words of the common, everyday woman in your community, I pray that this knowledge will stir what's left of your humanity to do the right thing. Step down as mayor or face recall. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller.
Mai Vang, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. Good evening. It has been ninety days since a verbal notice was given to Bobby about finding a resolution to the division she has caused in the community. Nothing has been done so far, so seems like all I'm hearing is prick chirping. No one from the city council has made an effort to resolve anything either. Given the repeated attitude that the council members and Bobby, we didn't expect anyone to do anything anyways. You all, especially Bobby, take us as a joke despite the many calls that were coming in at every single meeting. Are we nothing but a laughing matter? We are just some annoying citizen who just likes to spend our evening causing you headaches, right? A racist and considerate person who thinks she is above the darn law does not have what it takes to be a mayor. I grew up facing racism as a young child and to this day I still have to deal with it. I was belittled and was told to go back to my own country. It was traumatizing as a young child. I was not prepared at that age to handle racism. My parents didn't know how to handle it either because they too were targeted. I would cry to myself wondering what's wrong with me. I fear going out to the public to be judged based on my skin color, my culture, and who I am. Other kids would make fun of the food that I ate or that my culture was weird. It was unfortunate that my parents were not literate enough in English to stand up for me in the past. But as an adult today, I am standing up for my children and the ma, many Asian-American children who will be impacted by racism. I will not allow a ra, racist person like Bobby to perpetuate the hate she has against the Mong community. Bobby, just because you and some of your associates are Asian does not make you immune to spreading racism against another Asian minority group. One particular associate of yours harassed me several times last year just because they spoke up against your racism. My culture is not a controlling and intimidating system used to silence women. If it was, I wouldn't be this vocal and be able to stand up to you. To all of you who are listening tonight, do you know what it's like to be discriminated based on the lies that were spread about you? Do you know what it's like to cry to yourself to sleep at night because of the color of your skin? Do you know what it's like to go to school and have other made fun of you because your English wasn't good enough? If your answer to this is yes, then you should know very well when to stand up for what is right. Silence means acceptance and that is what I'm seeing so far. Council members, remember you were elected by the darn people to do your job. The people can take that right away from you to do the damn right thing. Bobby, I'm asking you to resign. Give me you seventy-two hours to resign or face a recall. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next caller, please.
John Wang, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you guys hear me now?
We can.
All right, this is for you guys. Uh, I'm sure no role to residents. I've sat quietly for quite some time now, listening in on calls after calls from the Mong community, calling and expressing the pain you have caused about the division brought into Asian, to Asian community. Because you're Asian, it does not excuse you. Which you have publicly stomped on. Instead of uniting us, us all, you guys more with your lies and refusal to give a simple sincere apology. If you as an Asian person can't even keep your Asian community united, what makes you even qualify representing us as a whole and every other minority here, you know, Grove? Last year was the Me Too trend you hopped on. This year is the anti-Asian trend. Looks like you guys are all about to hop on to make yourselves up, make yourselves all look good. Be ashamed of yourselves, especially what you guys did to the Mong community. You don't represent for all of our Asian community. You picked and chose. So please stop faking it to make it with the whole anti-Asian hate trend. That'll be a slap in the face to all of us Asians out here who are actually victims of hate crimes. Now, you know, I want to watch your circle. One of your supporters or buddies or associates has been going around harassing the Mong committee and threatening those who speak up about you or her with lawsuits into silence. Oh, we will not be silenced. The irony of that saying. A true leader does not block people. A true strong leader will face harsh criticism, concerns the community has, and will address them accordingly. A true strong leader will apologize for their mistakes and pain they've caused. Instead, you cower and play to them and your supporters silence people into submission. Well, look who's doing the silencing now and violating people's rights. You are a dirty politician first, Bobby, then a fellow sister being leader. That comes last. So therefore, I'm asking you to resign. That's it.
All right. Thanks for calling. Next caller, please.
Mai Chi, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Bobby Singh Allen, we have hoped that there would be some sense in you in which we have implored you to do the right thing, but your ego and pride was more important than doing the right thing. You have seventy-two hours to leave that mayor's seat. We are done with you. Get out.
Is that it? All right, next caller.
Sue Few, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
We can.
BS Allen, does everyone get a seat at your table? On your Bobby for Mayor Facebook page, you made a post denouncing the recent hate crimes against Asian-Americans. Several people commented on that post. The comments praising you, you kept. The ones you didn't agree with, you deleted. And then you blocked individuals you disagree with from further commenting. How's that giving everyone a seat at your table? You also posted a graph of anti-Asian hate incidents by state. California led the way with forty-three point eight percent. Guess what? Your bigoted, culturally insensitive racist narrative against the Mong people is part of that forty-three point eight percent. Here's a thought. Maybe you should just drop the "everyone gets a seat at my table" motto and think on this instead. When you tear out a man's tongue, you are not proving him a liar. You're only telling the world that you fear what he might say. Don't mistake your lip service and noise for true service and bravery. You haven't made it right with the Mong community for your racial disparagement against us almost one year ago. One year ago. You think your racist words have no lasting impact on my community? If any impact at all? You think we're making a big deal out of nothing? But all this nothing had you holding press conferences and deflecting blame onto others for what you did to my people. Your insufferable arrogance is why you have no remorse or empathy. Council members, how long is BS Allen going to go unchecked for her racism? Are you all going to continue playing this game of blind, deaf, and mute? Is getting her into the mayor's seat and keeping her there more important than her racism against the Mong people? If your answer is yes, then please stop with your phony diversity and inclusion talk. And I couldn't help notice a lot of last-minute changes to city council meetings and quick answers to projects now that BS Allen is mayor. The private city council club, all for one, one for all, huh? And since it's Women's History Month, I'll acknowledge BS Allen made history as the first female mayor of Sikh descent, but she's also the first racist mayor of Elk Grove. But she's also the first racist mayor of Elk Grove. BS Allen, your racism, lack of accountability, and narcissism makes you unfit to govern a city and its constituents. Resign now. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Mark Graham, you may unmute your line. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Mayor and Council Mark Graham, Elk Grove. Okay, first thing, the best way for the council to prepare for when the CNU appears on the council's agenda is for each one of you to watch the entire planning commission meeting from February eighteenth. Please do that. Also, why is the city issuing permits that have an unlimited duration for cell antennas? The city attorney said that you can place a ten-year limit on them. That should be the limit. Please direct him to do that. Also, please respond to two more residents that have written to the city. Tammy DePont, nine-nine-seven-nine Ferragamo Way and Kitman Likes, nine-nine-four-six Valgrande Way. They both wrote to the council opposing your plans to put a new cell antenna near their houses. And I sent you two or three follow-up emails for each one of them. Please respond. Now, two days ago, I sent the council some photographs and an email about what appears to be strand-mounted cell antennas. This is the account from my friend who lives in Sacramento. She says, "I'm okay, but really suffering from increased symptoms of electrohypersensitivity the past six or eight weeks at work and at home. A zillion electronic crickets going off nonstop. Have to wear hats, shirt, and hoodie, but even that only dumbs it down a bit. Great trouble sleeping again." And she says, "I was out in the yard, and my neighbor behind me is trimming her rose bush near our fence, and we strike up a conversation." She relates out of the blue that they came into her yard very early one morning in February and did some work. I looked up to see this device installed on the cable, meaning the power line. It is cylindrical with what looks like an antenna sticking out of one end. I told my neighbor about my condition, and she complained about the tinnitus-like condition. She said that both her and her husband are also having intense hissing, buzzing, ringing, and trouble sleeping, and never had it before. This is utter torment. Sending pick-up device. Do you know what it is? You should have received my email on Monday. Now, I wrote to the council in October and November and December about this. I asked you to prohibit these to the greatest extent possible. There is one of the current members of the council wrote back to me, and I have the text in late October and said that he had asked the city attorney to find out what the city could do to prevent or regulate these. But we never heard anything about it, so I'm asking you again. Council, please direct staff to look into that. Find out what the city can do to prevent or regulate these and do them. You're in a position where you can do something good for the residents. And that is you can be proactive about this. You can tackle this before it becomes a big fiasco. And it should not be allowed to become a big fiasco. Lastly, I sent you an email. For those of you that wanted to know about the electrohypersensitivity, there was an email that had something like six thousand people names that were collected by Children's Health Defense of people that said that they had been harmed, they or their child had been harmed by electromagnetic radiation. And then there was a document describing how they gathered those names.
Your time is up. Thank you for calling in.
Anthony Chisone, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen, and thank you to the rest of the city council and to the people of Elk Grove. My name is Anthony. I'm the founder of GreenKey. I'm here tonight to discuss body camera analytics. Less than zero point one percent of Elk Grove's body camera videos are ever reviewed. There's just simply too much video. Last year, Elk Grove had over fifty-two thousand police calls across about a hundred and fifty police officers. Police departments do not know which videos to keep or delete. Videos are not automatically classified or tagged, and these files accumulate, creating huge cost burdens for the city of Elk Grove. Insights like what is the level of respectfulness and de-escalation in the police department? Insights that can improve policing are not discovered. Mayors and city councils are not given visibility into police performance metrics. These metrics can improve the lives of both your police officers and your citizens. These analytics can save the city money. Body camera analytics is the future of policing. Elk Grove has been selected for free trial police body camera analytics with GreenKey and Amazon, along with twenty other police departments in California. Elk Grove was chosen in part because of your exceptional diversity. There's no cost and no obligation to this trial. We think everyone should know what percentage of police interactions are positive. Mayor, we hope you accept this offer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in. Thank you. Next caller.
Mary Few, you may unmute your line. You have three minutes.
Bobby Singh Allen, it is undisputed that you were given several options to to address this issue of your action against the Hmong for your blanket statement and your harm and the harm your statement have caused. To take a class on cultural sensitivity and to meet with the Hmong community leaders to educate yourself on the Hmong culture. It is your duty as a mayor to serve the people in your city, and you have failed. In the last nine months, you have denied and continued to deny and refuse to answer to the people, to the people in your city regarding the hate you have perpetuated against the Hmong community in the city of Elk Grove. We demand your resignation. You have until five P M. on Sunday, March thirteenth to resign your office as a mayor or be faced with the recall under applicable state and local laws. As for you, as for you, city council members, your actions are appalling. Your deliberate actions of ignoring the people who are raising serious concerns defines who you are. Keep on being ignorant, and I assure you, you will find yourself fighting to save your seat against the recall too. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
Danny Foster, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm calling today to speak my mind on a couple of issues that I feel are kind of plaguing our city. First is the influx of bums and junkies that are littering our highways and wandering into our neighborhoods. These people are not the hard-luck homeless. We dump plenty of money into plenty of programs that the actual homeless easily take advantage of. These people are drug addicts who want to do nothing more than exist. They are a threat to our safety and have no right jeopardizing our community's right to peace. Secondly, is the fact that our school board has done little or nothing to get our children back into a classroom, back on a playground, back to the important relationships with the teachers and mentors that they can't get at home or over Zoom. My kids have an amazing principal, an amazing vice principal that they love that relationship with, and they're just not getting that right now. And that's not fair to them, not at this time of their lives. Private schools have been open for months all over the state and have left a clear blueprint on how to safely get the kids and teachers back to normalcy. The political pandering that the Elk Grove School Board has succumbed to has exposed our children to mental and physical health issues that may not be realized until years from now and is an absolute embarrassment and has completely exposed the incompetence of this do-nothing board. I feel like these issues are a total result of failed leadership, and I'm hearing a lot of stuff tonight about maybe a recall for the mayor or stepping down, and maybe that is an option. Maybe that's something that needs to happen, and we need to put somebody in that place that's going to handle these issues because these are very important. I've talked to many other families, and these are the two things I feel that really strike the chords and have really kind of put a halt to what this great city has become. So anyways, I appreciate your time, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Next caller, please.
John M., you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, Harry?
We can.
The vandalism of Ummal Bar and Grill is horrible and sadly has been used as an example to illustrate racism and bigotry in Elk Grove. Especially with the new mayor Bobby Singh Allen is a racist towards another ethnic minority, the Hmong people. Bobby, let me put this in perspective so you might actually understand. The Hmong people are this place of business, and you're the person who vandalized this place with hate. Do you get it? Why there are still Hmong individuals demanding accountability from you? Nearly a year later, it's still no big deal to you. The Hmong community is just collateral damage for you to win an election. Bobby, honest question. If Steve Lee was a black man you ran against, would you have watched your words and chose them carefully? Would you have orchestrated your action with forethought, compassion, and understanding? You cherry pick your outrage. Racism is racism. If you stand up against one form of it, stand up against all forms of it. And with so many men individual in public office resigning or being removed from their position for making racist statements, it makes me wonder why Bobby has remained unscathed. Why has she gone unquestioned and unchecked by any of the political leaders here in Elk Grove? Yes, that is youth, the city council. City Hall and all who are affiliated like to signify diversity and inclusion. Our city of Elk Grove is more diverse than any in the country. But the inclusion part is tremendously lacking. When it comes to racial injustice committed by Bobby towards the Hmong community, council member, your silence is more about your stance than your word ever well. To the entire city council, your inability to discuss this pink elephant in the room, which is Bobby Singh Allen's racist action towards the Hmong community, is disturbing. Councilwoman Nguyen, this is directed towards you. You were very vocal last year about doing the right thing and about harassment, discrimination, and anything that was considered negative. This is no time to be silenced with the Asian hate crime climbing. I hope the city council actually consider censoring the mayor. And Bobby Allen, Singh Allen, you should resign.
Thank you for calling. Next caller, please.
I'm not seeing that there are any more hands raised.
And I'm on the same. Let me just make sure. And I'm seeing the same as well. We are concluded with our public comment under section five.
Okay, then with that, we will go on to the next agenda item.
It'll take us to section six, general administration information.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Jason Bearman, your city manager, happy to report on a few items happening across the city. First, the city's first smart city public planning workshop is scheduled on Tuesday, March twenty-third. The session will present an overview of the history and current model of smart cities and the development of preliminary smart city values and the vision for Elk Grove. Two identical workshop sessions will be held, one at eleven-thirty A M. and another at five-thirty P M. For more information or to register for the workshops, visit elkrovecity.org/smartcity. Elk Grove Animal Services, pleased to host a drive-through pet vaccine clinic this Saturday from nine A M. to noon in the parking lot of eight-two-two-zero Longleaf Drive, our new animal shelter. No appointment is necessary, but supplies are limited and offered on a first-come, first-served basis with proof of Elk Grove residency. Veterinary staff will administer free vaccinations for rabies, canine D H P P, and feline F V R C P. Free microchipping and pet licensing for newly acquired spayed neutered pets is also available. Please visit elkrovecity.org/animalservices for details. Another important upcoming meeting regarding groundwater in the area. A virtual public meeting will be held on Thursday, March twenty-fifth at six P M. to discuss the groundwater sustainability plan being developed for the South American sub-basin. Details in our registration link are available at sasbgroundwater.org. COVID-nineteen has presented challenges to us all, especially our essential workers. In honor of Women's History Month, we're accepting nominations recognizing female essential workers to honor their accomplishments, validate their hard work, and their overall contribution to the Elk Grove community. Nominees will be recognized later this month. Submit your nominations online by visiting the city's Elk Grove, the city of Elk Grove's Facebook page for the link. The Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce will host the virtual State of the City address presented by Mayor Singh Allen on Thursday, March twenty-fifth at six P M. Register to attend this meeting on Zoom on the chamber's website. This event will also be broadcast live on the city's website. Reminder, neighborhood good markets are now offered each Thursday from four to seven P M. And Sacto Moco's Dinners to Go events have a newly weekly format each Wednesday from four to seven P M. This is all available at our District Fifty-Six. Look for dailies and details and reminders on the city's social media channels. A few COVID-nineteen updates. Today, the House passed the final version of the American Rescue Act, H R thirteen nineteen, by a vote of two-twenty to two-eleven. With both Senate and House passage of the measure, H R thirteen nineteen is now headed to President Biden's desk for his signature as we reported that President Biden is expected to sign the package this Friday, March twelfth. The most significant provision contained in H R thirteen nineteen for Elk Grove is the hundred and thirty point two billion in direct aid to cities, counties, and states. Of the hundred and thirty point two billion in direct aid funding, sixty-five point one billion is for cities. Based on the formula used in the bill for distributing funding to cities, Elk Grove is in line to receive approximately twenty-three million dollars. Half of the funding in the bill for state, cities, and counties will be distributed this year, and the second half of the funding will be distributed next year. As outlined in the legislation, eligible uses of the direct aid dollars include responding to and mitigating a public health emergency respective COVID-nineteen emergency or negative impact on the economy. Cover costs incurred as a result of COVID-nineteen, replacing revenue that were lost by the city delayed or decreased as determined based on projections of the government. Funding recommendations for the city council will be coming back to the city council at a future meeting as far as how we can best put this money to use in the city of Elk Grove for businesses, nonprofits, and local government as well. Sacramento Housing and Rehabilitation Agency is distributing sixty-four million dollars for state and federal sources for the Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance for residents of Sacramento County. The funding offers emergency rental assistance for those that have lost income due to COVID-nineteen pandemic or end or in danger of becoming unhoused or experiencing housing instability. Funds can be used for past due rent or utility payments. Property owners are able to apply for assistance on behalf of their tenants. The households that previously applied for and or receive rental assistance through S E R A program are eligible to apply. Applications are being accepted now on the S H R A website at www.shra.org/sarah, S E R A through March nineteenth this month. And finally, our Great Plates Delivered Senior Meal Program was extended another month through April. There are currently five hundred and sixteen seniors and eighteen restaurants participating in the program. More than two hundred and forty thousand meals have been delivered since the program's launch back on May thirteenth of last year. As of March fifth, Great Plates has invested more than four point seven million dollars in local restaurants. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Do any of our colleagues here have any questions? Please unmute yourself. Hearing none. Thank you for the report and update, Mr. Lindgren. Appreciate it, and we will go ahead and go on to our next item.
That'll take us on to section seven, council comments, reports, and future agenda items.
All right, we will begin with Councilmember Spies.
All right, gotta get everything unmuted here. Hang on a second. Okay. Let's see. So I wanted to report out that on the twenty-fifth of February, we had the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. There was nothing to report there. And Ms. Anderson called in a little bit earlier. She asked me to highlight a bit more on the cleanups that the anti-trash group does every week. They do a significant impact on the city. And to let you know again that they're going to be cleaning up Franklin Creek and Trail this weekend, Saturday, ten A M. If you want more information on that, please take a look at their Facebook page. It's Elk Grove Anti-Trush. I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the groundbreaking of the Sky River Casino. I want to say congratulations to the tribe. This is a great thing for them, as I think it will be a great thing for us as well. Of course, I won't elaborate too much more because I know there are four others who would probably like to talk to that a bit. And so with that, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very little to report. I did have a Central Valley Rail Working Group meeting on the twenty-sixth of last month. We had a report from Mr. Kelly, the CEO of the High-Speed Rail, as well as Chad Edison, who's a deputy director with California DOT Rail Division, talking about essentially how they're going to interface the use the ACE network to operate the high-speed rail when it gets going. And then had our team meeting Monday night, which one of the only items on the agenda was a presentation by staff on update of how the discussion- of how the discussions for potential annexation of Elk Grove back into the RT district, how that's going. And the presentation was very high level, but it was very positive in tone and was confirmed in my briefing with the general manager and CEO today that both city of Elk Grove staff and RT staff feel like that is moving in a very positive direction. There is a very minor outstanding issue relative to codifying some language that protects the level of service in Elk Grove, ensuring that we have equitable share of transit. You know, in light of RT having a fairly draconian formula relative to ridership and which routes you put on the chopping block first in hard financial times. So we don't want those hard financial times, but we do want to be sure that we protect our riders if we need to. And then as Councilmember Spees mentioned, I too attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the Sky River Casino yesterday, and I will say what stood out to me the most, and it was palpable in the air, in addition to the cacophony of car horns from the tribal members in attendance, is just the feeling of a little bit of self-reliance that the folks from the tribe have there. And this is kind of reclaiming their individual identity and liberty. And really, it was heartwarming to listen to those speakers and have them talk about what it just means for them to be able to be a little bit more self-reliant. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Not much to report, although we had at our transportation committee meeting at SACOG. Pleased to see we approved allocations from several different federal and local transit funding sources to receive monies to Elk Grove for operations, capital projects, and as well as bus replacements. Mayor, I'll defer to you for the recovery task force this week, and also pleased to be able to participate in the groundbreaking ceremony for Sky River. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, when?
Nothing to report, Mayor, just to let folks know and encourage them to be at the creek cleanup this Saturday. I'll be there and I can entice them in some donuts. I'll see you all there. Thanks.
Thank you. I always like donuts. Quick report on my end. I had the Sacramento Area Sewer District and Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District meeting this morning. The we have an STA meeting tomorrow. And then the our task force, our Economic Resilience Task Force meeting was on Monday. Very well attended. I think every participant was there. We had a special presentation from the county with Supervisor Natoli's office that provided even additional resources and some other inside information that we didn't necessarily have. So things are going really well there. And in fact, there was so much interest from Supervisor Natoli's office that the Chief of Staff was really interested in being a member of our task force because of the great work that we're doing. So we went ahead and moved forward and added an additional member to our task force. And then I would like to see if we can get consensus on honoring our outgoing planning commissioners, just to do a recognition for the three that are no longer serving on the planning commission, to formally thank them here with the city council on their dedication and service for the commission. So I would like to bring that up for the next city council agenda.
I support that. Yep, absolutely.
Great.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you. So Jason, and you have direction on that. So if we can do some sort of recognition, would love to see other, you know, I don't know what we do for past practices for commissioners, but would definitely like to do some recognition and then maybe even do like a video dedication or something along those lines. So I'll trust staff to come up with something nice to honor the three that are that are no longer serving, at least in this capacity right now. So thank you for that support, and that's all I have for my report. We will now move on to the next item.
It'll take us to section eight, the consent calendar items.
All right, I will open up the public comment opportunity.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, we've not received any items submitted prior to the meeting, but as we are in this Zoom environment, we still do have attendees that are signed up. So that if any of our attendees, if you do have an interest in addressing any of the items on the consent calendar, we would ask you to use that raise hand function now. Currently, what I'm seeing is we don't have anyone with comments for the consent calendar items. They may be waiting for other items or just seeing how the meeting is going. So with that, I will close that there is no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. And that this time I will formally close the public comment opportunity and turn it over to council to approve our consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Hume. I will go ahead and move the consent calendar, but I will note that I will be recusing myself from a vote on item 8.12, which is the Elk Grove Florin Sidewalk Project due to my personal residence proximity to Elk Grove Florin. And the city attorney has advised me that just noting that verbally is enough that I don't actually have to somehow remove myself from a virtual environment.
Okay, very good.
That is correct. And I would just also note that your vote would not count towards that item, assuming that the consent agenda is voted on as a block. Your vote would be an abstention on that item and recorded as such in the record.
But we don't need to hear that item separately. Is that correct?
No, you don't need to hear separately. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks for that input. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
And with the roll call vote, with that motion to move the consent calendar items with Hume with a recusal abstention on item 812, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
So those consent calendar items will pass 5-0 with that exception on 812, as noted for Councilmember Hume's abstention, recusal on that.
All right. Make the motion for 812. Oh, no, he just abstained.
Yeah, we're good.
We're good on that front. That will take us on to section nine, our public hearings. And our item for 9.1 is actually for public hearings, which is considered the 53rd Annexation to Community Facilities District 2003-2 for Police Services, the 65th Annexation to CFD 2006-1 for Maintenance Services, 41st Annexation to Street Maintenance District 1 Zone 3 AD, and 38th Annexation to Stormwater Drainage V Zone 2. And I think we're looking to pull in staff as a panelist. And I think we have everything set up and ready to go for Renee Atar to take over the screen share. And just give us a brief moment as we activate our staff member here.
Jason, can you see my screen?
Your screen is just pulled up. If you just want to do the full screen version, right now we can see the slide kind of functions of PowerPoint.
Okay, perfect. Bear with me. I'm having a little bit of internet issues this evening. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax district. The city maintains eight special tax districts which provide funding for infrastructure or for services such as for police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Our project may require annexations. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. The special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. Tonight, there is one project that is being proposed for annexation. It's the Contenza Parcel Map Project. Being annexed of following four special tax districts. The first is CFD 2003-2 Police Services for Public Safety Services. Second is CFD 2006-1 for Maintenance Services. The third is Street Maintenance District 1 Zone 3 for Local Collector and Arterial Street Maintenance Services. And the last is Stormwater Drainage V Zone 2 for Stormwater Drainage and Runoff Maintenance. And all of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. Just a little bit more specifically about the project. The project proposed for annexation consists of two residential units located southwest, southwest-ish of Calvin Road and Grantline Road. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
All right. At this time, I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 open. And I will now open the public comment opportunity.
It looks as though we do have a speaker who's signed up to speak. And I'll wait for staff and then I'll hold that timer and get ready to go. But I believe it's Mr. Joey Tomko, but we'll work on getting them the capacity to attach into the meeting.
Jason, his mic is unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Indeed, we can. Please proceed.
Okay. First of all, really what I have is questions. I'm not understanding what this parcel map taxing thing is. It's something about drainage and, and well, if I could see it again, I could go through it. So I'm kind of curious what this is, what this is about. As far as are we, are we raising some special tax for this area or what? I'm sorry that I'm having to ask a question rather than a comment, but I'm just kind of confused on what it is you're actually trying to do here. Could somebody enlighten me?
I don't know if that's possible, Joey, but I'll go ahead and take a stab at at least answering your question. So just, yeah, you're welcome. Happy to dive on this grenade. Any anytime a parcel map comes forward and they have to be annexed into a community facilities district, typically it's the master property owner that then annexes all of those would be created lots into those districts. So those things like landscape and lighting districts, police services, drainage services. So it's the same thing that you, that most residents in Elk Grove pay with their property tax bill, all of your CFDs and your Melrose taxes.
Okay, because where this is, you know, we don't have Melo Russes. We don't have drainage because we're not on city water. We're not on city sewer or anything. So that's why I was kind of confused if this is some new tax you're trying to tax us for our dirt out here or what it was. So this is just what I'm already paying is just because he's dividing the lot is why this has to be done.
That's right. So that the new lots will also be making those same payments.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Pat. I appreciate it. I appreciate that. And as you probably know, that lot was my lot and I actually sold it to La Coco, so. I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood what was actually being done here. So thank you. Thank you for the explanation. I'm done.
Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Hume, for providing that additional clarification. Are there any other public comments?
I'm looking over and I do not see any other raised hands under the item. And so that will conclude the public comments for this first part for CFD 2003-2 public comment.
Okay, then I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 closed.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution calling a special election.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
And that roll call vote on motion A-1, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
That resolution will pass 5-0.
Okay, and request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of two possible votes, two affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate of portion described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
I'll move to adopt the resolution declaring those results.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
And that roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
That resolution will pass 5-0.
I'll move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance living and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2003-2 Police Services Annexation Number 53 and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.18.010.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
And that roll call vote, Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
And the ordinance will pass 5-0 of motion A3.
All right, we have a second public hearing. Okay, go ahead.
Do we need a separate hearing or can I move on to motion B1?
We actually do open these as separate public hearings. It is a requirement since each one of these is a separate entity that we treat under both the California Constitution and then the process of the California codes that dictate each one of these. So thank you, everyone, for going through the process. But it is this ability for us to be able to hold these meetings and hold an election during our public hearings in this manner.
All right. Well, I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 open.
And I'll do a quick review of our hands in the audience, and I don't believe there's any further raised hands. That will conclude the public comment on 2006-1.
All right, then I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 closed.
And now I'll move motion B1.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
And that roll call vote, Councilmember Spees. We're almost there. We, I don't think we got you unmuted, Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
There we go. Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of B1 passes 5-0.
All right, and now I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of two possible votes, two affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate of portion described. Measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure or resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Move to adopt a resolution declaring those results.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
And that roll call vote, Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
And the resolution of B2 passes 5-0.
So I will move to introduce in full and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance living and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services Annexation Number 65 and amending the Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Second.
Hey, we got a motion in a second.
And that roll call vote, Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sun.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The ordinance of motion B3 will pass 5-0.
All right, we will move on to our third public hearing. SMD 3 Annex 41. And I will declare the public hearing for SMD 3 Annex 41 open. And I will now open up the public comment opportunity.
And as I review, I do not see any raised hands, so that would conclude any of the interest for folks to jump in on public opportunity on this item.
Right, then I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SMD 3 Annex 41 closed. And request Mr. Lindgren to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of two possible votes weighted according to proportional financial obligation for the property. Two affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. Resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
I'll adopt the resolution to determine to levy the assessments and stormwater drainage V Zone 2.
We're just one ahead up above, so that would actually be for Street Maintenance District 1 Zone 3 AD.
Oh, sorry, stand down too far. Yep. Street Maintenance District One, Zone Three AD.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
And I'll start out that roll call vote again on the Street Maintenance District Annexation forty-one, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
And the resolution of motion C will pass five oh.
All right, we will go on to our fourth public hearing, SWDF three annex thirty-eight. And I will now declare the public hearing for SWDF annex thirty-eight open. And I will open the public comment opportunity.
And again, we're in the same situation. I think our folks have made their comments on these items. We don't have anyone else with a raised hand, so that'll conclude the public comment opportunity.
All right, then I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SWDF annex thirty-eight closed. And request the clerk to provide results of the ballot tabulation.
And again, there is no majority protest of two possible votes weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property. Two affirmative votes were returned. The ballots approved, the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Excellent.
Move to adopt that.
Adopt a resolution. Determine to levy assessment stormwater advantage be zone two where Councilman Hume cuts me.
I think Council, I think Vice Mayor Wen wanted to second this one.
All right. With the motion and the second, we'll move to that roll call vote for this item. Councilmember Spees.
Yes.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
And motion D, the resolution pass five oh.
All right, then we will go on to our next agenda item.
That will take us to section ten, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item ten point one, which is to receive a presentation on traffic enforcement and mitigation efforts within the city of Elk Grove.
Good evening, everyone. This is Lieutenant Eric White. Can you hear me okay?
Coming in loud and clear, and we have the visuals, so please proceed.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good evening. My name is Eric White and I'm a lieutenant with the police department, and I'm here tonight along with the city's traffic engineer, Ryan Chapman, to present information to the community and city council on how the city implements speed enforcement and mitigation efforts to improve traffic safety. Traffic safety touches every part of our community, and tonight you're going to hear how the city has a very collaborative approach involving various city departments of the police, public works, traffic engineers, and our public information officers working together. Throughout the presentation, we plan on demonstrating how we work together to improve our service on traffic safety. The city of Elk Grove's approach involves the three E's of traffic safety. Those three E's are education, engineering, and enforcement. You're going to hear us talk about those throughout our presentation. During the presentation, Mr. Chapman and I will demonstrate how the city applies those three E's in speed enforcement and mitigation efforts. We're also going to provide an overview on speed laws, engineering and traffic surveys, and how speed enforcement and education strategies are utilized in Elk Grove. Our hopes after the presentation are for you to have a increase in understanding on how the legal process of how speed limits are established and our efforts at speed enforcement and traffic mitigation efforts and how we work together on those. Next up will be Mr. Chapman, and he's going to start the presentation by explaining how various state laws regulate speed limits.
Thank you. I am Ryan Chapman. I am the traffic engineer. And I want to start off with some basic speed limit laws from the vehicle code. The first one is the basic speed law, and it states that a driver should never drive faster than is safe for current conditions regardless of the posted speed limit. This means that if there is a change in the roadway condition such as a lane closure or rain, then the motorist should drive at a safe speed and not just follow the posted speed limit. The next one I wanted to speak of is the maximum speed law, which states that the maximum speed limit on a multi-lane highway is sixty-five miles an hour. And on a two-lane undivided highway, it is fifty-five miles an hour. This applies whether or not the road is posted with that speed limit. Then there are a series of prima facie speed limits. These are set based on conditions being met. For example, twenty-five mile an hour residential district needs to have sixteen residences in a quarter of a mile or thirteen on one side of the street, and the road cannot be classified as a collector. And the speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour for business district applies when fifty percent of the fronting properties in a six foot hundred foot long segment are businesses. A school's on speed limit of twenty-five applies within five hundred feet of a school when children are present. And then a speed limit for alleyways of fifteen miles an hour, and an alleyway must be less than twenty-five feet wide and must be at the rear of the adjacent properties. And finally, the speed limit of fifteen miles an hour applies when you're crossing an ungated railroad crossing. And finally, there are speed limits that are based on engineering and traffic surveys or E N T S's. And these, an engineering traffic survey, which is sometimes called a speed study, allows to reduce the speed limit below the maximum speed limit based on the study of the existing traffic patterns. The survey must be based on an unobstructed speed on the roadway. It is collected during clear and sunny conditions when the road is open and free from road closures or other obstructions that would cause drivers to behave differently than they would otherwise. And based on the superior, this data, a prevailing speed is determined. The prevailing speed is defined as the speed that eighty-five percent of that traffic was traveling, measured, measured traffic was traveling at or under. Prevailing, prevailing speed is very important because it is used as the basis to establish the speed limit. It is used this way because it represents the speed that the majority of the drivers felt was safe and comfortable to drive at. And these drivers are making the decision on what that safe speed is. They're usually based on factors such as the curvature of the road, lane width, adjacent land uses, and other users on the road. The underlying assumption is that the majority of drivers are driving in a reasonable and safe manner. Once the prevailing speed is determined, based on the speed survey, it must be rounded off to the nearest five mile an hour increment. This allows for the, the law then allows for a reduction of the rounded speed limit by up to five miles an hour for a condition that is not readily apparent to the driver. Examples of these conditions are an elevated collision history on the road or pedestrian and bicycle activity that the driver would not expect. There are also things that are specifically not allowed to be considered when you're making that condition that's not readily apparent to the driver, including the roadway width, the roadway curvature, or the design of the road, the roadway pavement condition, or surface conditions, and adjacent land uses. I have two examples of how speed limits are rounded. The first one, the prevailing speed was measured at forty-eight miles an hour. This would be rounded off to fifty and then can be kept at fifty or reduced to forty-five miles an hour if a condition not readily apparent to the driver is met. The second example, the prevailing speed is forty-seven miles an hour. This is rounded off to forty-five and could then be reduced to forty. Finally, speed surveys must be reevaluated every five years. In most instances, the previous survey result can be recertified and is still effective, and the enforceable speed can remain the same. If this cannot happen, say, to a change in the road condition, a new speed survey must be conducted and a new speed limit established. So to summarize, the speed limits on the major roads, all major roads in Elk Grove are based on the prevailing speeds, and there is an engineering and traffic study supporting them. And this allows for the enforcement of those speed limits. Without a valid speed survey, the enforceable speed limit on these routes would become the prima facie, which would typically be fifty-five or sixty-five, unless there is an applicable speed limit, a prima facie speed limit criteria such as a residential district or school district. Some examples of roads that would have, would have a maximum speed limit of sixty-five without the speed survey or the E N T S. Elk Grove Boulevard, Whitelock Parkway, and then Big Horn Boulevard. And routes for the maximum speed limit would be fifty-five would include Sheldon Road, East of Elk Grove Florin, the majority of Waterman Road, and then East Stockton Boulevard. Hopefully, I've provided you with a good understanding of how and why speed limits are set. And now Lieutenant White will discuss the enforcement of these speed limits.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. So what you see on this slide right here is the, the definition of California's basic speed law, section twenty-two, three, fifty. I know Mr. Chapman briefly highlighted that on a previous slide, and there are several other sections that can be used for speeding vehicles and be cited on it. But I really want to highlight this section because this is, this is the, the section that is used primarily for any time speed is unsafe. And the two words I want you to really take away from the slide because they're going to come up a few more times in this, in this presentation are the underlying words reasonable and safety. So I'm sure you're wondering now, how do police officers determine what speeds are, are reasonable and what speeds are safe? And so there's a number of factors that are considered. If a speed limit is posted as a forty-five mile an hour zone, and an officer measures the speed of a vehicle going, let's say, sixty miles an hour, just because that vehicle is traveling fifteen miles an hour over that posted speed limit doesn't mean it's a slam dunk explaining that that vehicle is speeding based on this basic speed law. So the officer is still going to be responsible for explaining and demonstrating to the courts why that speed is unsafe. So a number of factors will be considered regarding whether it's reasonable and prudent. The officer is going to look at the normal traffic flow at the time that they stop the vehicle and issue a citation. Was the vehicle doing anything else such as weaving across other lanes, such as passing other vehicles, which we do see frequently? And also, was it speeding up and tailgating other vehicles, creating a bigger danger? All those factors are definitely considered, and we're looking for those. We're also looking at other factors that may endanger the safety of persons or property such as is the vehicle speeding in a business or school district, which is obviously something we're a little more sensitive to, especially around schools. And again, all these, all these factors are based on the officer's perspective, what they're seeing and, and taking in the totality of everything that they're seeing. And ultimately, they're, they're responsible for explaining that to, to the traffic court judge, which will come up in a little bit in a couple more slides. So next up, how is speed measured? And there's two common practices. I'm sure most of us have heard radar, which is using an electronic device to measure the speed of a vehicle. And then another one is pacing vehicles. And pacing vehicles is basically where the officer is going to match their front bumper to the rear bumper of the vehicle that they're pacing. This is, you know, generally done from a distance that is safe for everybody to help them determine the speed. Of those, of these two methods, radar is by far the preferred method used by Elk Grove police officers as it is much safer, more efficient, and is highly reliable in courtroom testimony. Of all the speeding citations that the Elk Grove Police Department issues, it's my estimate that well over ninety percent of all speeding violations are issued by use of a radar device for the reasons that I specified earlier. Pacing is more commonly used to determine speed on long, straight roadways. You're going to see California Highway Patrol using this method much more because freeways are generally designed that way. In Elk Grove, it's much more difficult because we don't have roadways that are nearly as long as freeways. So it makes it much more challenging. We have a lot of intersections, stop signs, roads that change direction, and so forth. So all those factors make it very difficult for pacing. But by far, as I said earlier, the radar method is the preferred method. It is much safer for the officer, it's much safer for other motorists as well, and much easier to explain in court. The other thing on pacing is there is also more opportunity for human error when pacing a vehicle. Engineering and traffic surveys, as Mr. Chapman explained, play a critical role in the speed enforcement program as well as they provide the legal mechanism to determine speeds based on the normal flow of traffic during off-peak hours. There are two state laws that require an engineering and traffic survey to allow police officers to enforce speed limits whenever those speed limits deviate from the, from the statutory maximum speed limits that Mr. Chapman alluded to earlier. So the first section I want you to be aware of is California Vehicle Code Section two, two, three, five, seven. This is a law that requires an engineering and traffic survey to justify any time we want to, the city wants to increase a speed limit on a roadway that's greater than twenty-five miles per hour to facilitate orderly movement of vehicular traffic based on what is reasonable and safe. Those are those key words again. This is a section that, in talking to Mr. Chapman earlier, I don't think we use this law very often to increase the speeds above twenty-five miles per hour. But the next slide is, is more applicable to Elk Grove. The other section is California Vehicle Code Section two, two, three, five, eight. This section, this law requires an engineering and traffic survey to justify any time we want to decrease the speed limit less than sixty-five miles per hour to facilitate orderly movement of vehicular traffic. This is a section that we use quite frequently because we feel that if we allow the speed limits to stay at the statutory maximum speed limits, which is generally going to be fifty-five or sixty-five depending on the, the roadway, how wide it is, how many lanes it is. If we did not use the engineering and traffic survey to help us justify a safer, more reasonable speed limit than the speed limits by this law would need to default to, to those statutory limits, which in almost every case is going to be an increase in speed limits to those streets. So can you go back to that slide one more time, please? Thank you. So some of those roadways, I think it's important to mention that would, that would qualify under this section if we were to, to not use an engineering and traffic survey would be major arteries in the city such as Elk Grove Boulevard, Laguna Boulevard, Whitelock Parkway, Bruceville Road, Big Horn Boulevard, and Franklin Boulevard, all major arteries in arterial roadways in the city of Elk Grove that we have current certified engineering and traffic surveys to, to lower those speed limits based on this law so that we can run an effective speed enforcement program to make sure that we're doing the best we can to keep those roadways safe. Thank you. So I mentioned earlier that police officer is going to make decisions on issuing citations when they're working speed enforcement based on what they're comfortable explaining in traffic court. This is, you know, this is our, our judge of how speed laws are going to be used. And ultimately, the officer is responsible for explaining why he or she issues a ticket. So engineering and traffic surveys are absolutely critical for prosecution. The first thing a police officer is going to do before he or she works a particular roadway for speed enforcement is they're going to make sure that we have a certified engineering and traffic survey to, to make, make sure that that's on file with the courts. The engineering and traffic survey is not only required by law, as I previously, previously explained, but it's also required by traffic courts to provide information to our traffic judges about the area of the roadway to justify why the speed of a vehicle was not reasonable and was not safe. Some of the information that's going to be include, included on a engineering and traffic survey is going to be a description of the roadway. How many lanes is it? How wide is it? Is there a bike lane? Is it in a business or school district? Is it by a park? What is the eighty-five percentile or what is the prevailing speed when we went out there and did that engineering and traffic survey? Because that's telling the courts with that normal traffic flow, which is, which is critical in these type of cases for speed enforcement. And also, last but not least, the California Vehicle Code sections that I outlined earlier require an engineering and traffic survey in order for a police officer to, to work speed enforcement on any streets. So as I mentioned earlier, the California Vehicle Code Sections two, two, three, five, seven, and two, two, three, five, eight, provide the legal basis for how speed limits are established. So the next question is, what happens when municipal police departments or cities do not follow the speed limits that are established with an engineering and traffic survey? So essentially, when that happens, the, the city is creating what's commonly referred to as a speed trap. And a speed trap is when the, when the speed limits are changed based on, and not based on an engineering and traffic survey. So in other words, it's almost kind of like making up what the city may feel is the appropriate speed limit. Well, the California Vehicle Code is very clear that if, if a police department wants to work speed enforcement, they're going to need to have an engineering and traffic survey. Without that, it, it would become a speed trap, and a speed trap in California in this circumstance would not be considered legal. So I know we've shared a lot of information, a lot of technical information about the laws and so forth. And so basically, I see three options of how a police department and how a, a city could proceed with their speed enforcement program. The first is that they structure their, their speed program exactly how we're doing it right now, using certified engineering and traffic surveys before working any speed enforcement. That's the legal process and that's, that's regulated by California Vehicle Code. The second is to disregard any engineering and traffic surveys that we may have and to allow the speed limit to default to the maximum speed limits, which would generally be fifty-five or sixty-five. So think of the six roadways that I shared with you earlier. That's what would happen there. And likely, in, in all those cases, the speed limits would increase ten to fifteen, I think, actually twenty miles an hour, almost twenty miles an hour on some of them. So that would be quite an increase in, in our speed limits. And, and there would be some, some big concerns with that, obviously. And then the last option would be to reduce speed limits in, in a manner not in compliance with the California Vehicle Code. But unfortunately, that would eliminate our ability to conduct speed enforcement in any of those areas. And now over back to Mr. Chapman.
Thank you. So I wanted to speak for a few minutes about some traffic calming efforts that the city has used. So traffic calming is the use of physical measures to alter driver behavior and reduce speeds. These measures typically fall into one of three main categories. The first is vertical changes to the road, such as speed humps. The second is horizontal changes to the road, such as chicanes. The third one is changes to lane widths or the number of lines. There are various types of traffic calming efforts that have been used by the city or other cities, including speed humps, signage and striping, road diets, class four or buffered bikeways, roundabouts or alternative road geometries. So this slide shows a couple of physical traffic calming features. On the left, we have a chicane, and these are horizontal deflections to the roadway meant to cause drivers to slow down as they navigate the curves. These are ideally suited for, suited for collectors where there is sufficient traffic such that the motorists must stay in their lane. And then on the right, we have a roundabout, roundabout slow traffic entering an intersection, but they're not effective for mid-block speed control. They are also beneficial in reducing collisions, but they typically require more right-of-way versus other intersection controls, making it difficult to retrofit existing intersections in developed areas. These are ideally suited for intersections with many-turning vehicles such as side street traffic or a previous collision history. And on this slide, we have a couple of different examples of strapping changes involving bike lanes. The slide on the left shows the cycle track. This one is actually on Franklin Boulevard. It is repurposed an extremely wide, outside lane. The lane was sixteen to twenty feet to include a narrow or vehicle-traveling and buffered bike lane for the cyclists. This is also referred to as class four, four bikeway. And in this case, we used bollards to keep the motorists from entering the bike way. On the right, we have some green bike lanes. The green bike lanes raise motorist awareness of the presence of the bike lanes and cyclists. And they are typically placed at locations with a high likelihood of vehicle and bicycle interaction, such as at driveways, right turns at intersections, narrow streets, and bridge crossings. And then finally, we've got speed humps. Speed humps are an excellent resource for residential streets, but they can be controversial for the residents on the streets. Some want the humps and some don't. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Guidelines, humps are only appropriate on roadways with speed limits thirty miles an hour or less. Please note that the city guidelines use a maximum speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour for the road to be eligible for humps. Placing them on streets with higher speed limits creates a situation where vehicles traveling at the speed limit could lose control of their vehicle when navigating the hump. In addition, speed humps might reduce emergency vehicle response times for the fire department. And this must be considered when selecting streets where they can be placed. The city does have a residential speed control program that allows residents to petition for the humps. And there are four main steps in this program that must be completed. The first one is the petition from the residents demonstrating broad support of people that will be affected by the humps. The next one is reviewed by city and CSD fire staff to determine if the road is appropriate or appropriate locations can be found on the road to install humps. And then we require concurrence, concurrence from property owners that will have a hump placed in front of their property. And finally, a survey to ensure that the property owners support the final proposed speed hump plan. Once approved, the street is placed on a waiting list to have the humps installed, pending available funding. Public Works typically budge at seventy-five thousand dollars a year for installing, installing the speed humps. And this funding has been able to install all the humps that have been requested in a given year. We do get two common questions about this. And the first one is why only resident streets? And again, the ITE guidelines provide that humps should not be placed on roads with a speed limit over thirty miles an hour because this creates a situation where drivers could lose control of their vehicles when navigating them. And the second question is why does the fire need to concur? Speed humps affect the travel of emergency vehicles directly, reducing the response time of fire and medical personnel. Therefore, concurrence by emergency response teams is important to maintain high levels of public safety and fast response times. Lieutenant White will now discuss education efforts that have been undertaken by the city to promote safe driving.
So I know we spoke about speed enforcement earlier, so now I'm going to talk a little bit about our educational component, particularly more from the police department. So education obviously is, is our preferred mitigation tool to deter unsafe driving behaviors. We do partner with the Office of Traffic Safety to utilize grant funding for traffic safety operations. I believe we, we've had that partnership for fifteen years straight. One of the common type of operations that we use this funding for is to conduct DUI checkpoints. And a lot of people have a misperception of DUI checkpoints, but the, the primary emphasis is, is not enforcement, but it's actually education. So we pick locations that have high area of impact with vehicles. And generally, we're looking at seven hundred to one thousand vehicles that we contact per operation. And some of those vehicles have multiple passengers, so we do reach more people. And we generally have volunteers from Mothers Against Drunk Driving with us, so we work in conjunction with them. We do have one coming up later this month, our first one this year. We also have some other programs that we use funding from the Office of Traffic Safety. Those are pedestrian, motorcycle, and bicycle safety operations, distracted driving operations, DUI saturation patrols. That's different than checkpoints. That's where officers are, are driving around the city. Sometimes multiple cars looking for just impaired drivers, obviously DUI checkpoints, and then speed enforcement operations. And we generally fund about seventy-five separate speed enforcement operations under this grant every year. So that's quite a few additional operations. That's all overtime outside of normal work hours to, to really supplement all of our speed enforcement. As I mentioned earlier, with Office of Traffic Safety, we follow a, we follow their campaign that every month kind of highlights certain types of enforcement or education operations. So for example, the month of April is dedicated, the entire month is dedicated to distracted driving. So in the next few weeks, you'll see some social media releases come out regarding that. And then September is pedestrian safety because that's generally the month when, when students are returning back to school. We also have a school traffic safety committee that meets quarterly. We have members from, I'm on that along with my traffic sergeant, both from the traffic unit. We have Mr. Chapman from traffic, our traffic engineer on there. We also have members from the school, Elk Grove Unified School District on there and also from the Sheriff's Department. And the purpose of, of this committee is just to meet quarterly and to review, share information about what we're hearing that's happening at schools. It's, you know, we look at the data, we look at complaints that we're receiving from, from the community, receiving from the schools. We look at collisions in around the schools and anything else we may be hearing from officers that are patrolling the schools. So we use, try to use a pretty holistic approach to, to looking at what's happening at those schools and, and ask ourselves, we need to increase enforcement, education, engineering, whatever the issue may be at those schools. The police department has two speed trailers. They're both solar powered. I think one of them has been out on the streets for two years straight, has not, has not come out of service in two years. The other one's about a year. We put those on streets where we receive complaints from the community just as a visual deterrent, where maybe we're getting a lot of complaints or just high visibility. We, last I checked, we had a four-month waitlist for those speed trailers to be deployed. So quite a bit of interest from the community. And we do try to move that around at least weekly based on what we're hearing from the community. As I mentioned earlier, we work with our public information officers, the city, as well as the police department's public information officers. The screen you hear, you see here is probably one of my favorites one, favorite ones. It's kind of near and dear to me. It's, we had two traffic officers that would do Traffic Tip Thursday, and we had a lot of success with, with those officers. And we hope to bring something like that back soon. But this is just one of the opportunities that we use our social media platforms to try to connect with the community and, and provide tips in a proactive way with whatever we're seeing, whatever we're hearing that's traffic-related. We do have red light cameras in the city. We have five intersections. We have one direction, one approach for each intersection. So in other words, we're not, we don't have cameras at all four approaches to each intersections. We do pick those locations based on areas that obviously have high traffic volumes. And I think Bruceville and Laguna is upwards of maybe seventy thousand vehicles last time I checked for their traffic volume. So obviously, a pretty high populated intersection. It's also, we pick intersections for photo enforcement that are very wide in their approach so that we can actually do photo enforcement safely. But they, they also pick these intersections based on collision data, pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, and so forth. One thing that a lot of people don't know about, but we try to share it when we can, is of all the red light camera violations that we receive from our vendor, the police department reviews all of those, and we reject about eighty percent. And that number has been consistent for, I'd say, at least the last five years, maybe longer than that. And so what we're really focusing on is the more egregious violations. If there's a pedestrian walking in the crosswalk and a vehicle doesn't stop going through that, that's a pretty easy one to issue a citation on. But we are trying to definitely target the more egregious violations so that we're being fair to the community. Here's another concept that we've only been using for maybe a little bit over a year now. And it's called intelligence-led policing. And, and we use it, we started using it in the police department mainly to, to have a proactive approach towards crimes that are occurring or crime trends that were occurring. And basically, it's kind of like a hot, a hotspot policing concept where we're using the data that's, that's coming into us from reports and from calls for service from the community. And then we're just basically prioritizing that in the entire department. So just imagine every shift, every officer that is working in, in a police car, we are going to change our focus every, about every two weeks based on crime trends we're seeing. So what we added a, a year ago, a little over a year ago, we added the same component, but we expanded it to traffic complaints and traffic enforcement. And so we use that same concept to see what's happening in the community, what we're hearing from the community. And, and I'll tell you right now, because I implement the traffic part of this, it is almost one hundred percent community-driven. So based on the complaints we're receiving, that's where we're sending, sending our officers. So obviously, we do get school safety complaints when schools in, we get speeding complaints. But I'd say right here, the, the one part that we use the most is stop sign violations. But we've also used it for street racing and for modified exhaust systems. So I know we provided a lot of information about traffic enforcement and mitigation efforts. We, we did try to be kind of your time and streamline it the best we could, but we won't leave this time open for any questions that anybody may have.
All right. Thank you for that excellent presentation. Before we go on to council, I will open up the public comment opportunity.
And as I look, it looks as though we have some folks that are going in and raising their hands. So I'll start coordinating with staff and pull up that speaker timer on the screen.
Lance Ray, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Lance Ray. I'm the Assistant Fire Chief and Fire Marshal for Kasumnas Fire. I'm on the line along with Deputy Chief Dan Quiggle from the district. We just wanted to thank the city of Elk Grove for the collaboration on the placement of the traffic calming devices. We obviously have an interest in that. I appreciate being included in the system to place those devices and would be happy to answer any questions that may be specific to fire and EMS. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Were there other callers?
I do believe we had Mr. Joey Tomco signing up.
Mr. Tomco, you may unmute your line and go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right. Thank you. I have a question. You talk about the traffic studies to see what the speed should be. How do you, how do you get the speed part of that? Do you just sit there with radar guns for three or four days? Or how are you calculating the speed? And, and I'm not talking about the, you know, the, the road conditions and all. I'm talking just about the speed part of it. How, how do you do that? I'm just curious.
Hi, this is Ryan Chapman, City Traffic Engineer. We actually have an unmarked vehicle and technician with a radar device that goes out there and measures the speeds on the road.
Okay, so, so it's, it's done without people's knowledge that there's a radar gun or anything like that? And do you, do you do the speed weekends, weekdays, all different times, there are all different days of the week?
Typically, we do it on weekdays. We do it during off-peak time, so not during rush hours.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, caller. Do we have any other public comments?
And I do not see any other members of the public signed up for this item. That would conclude the public comment for item ten point one.
All right, then I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and open it up to council for discussions, direction. Any comment?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Thank you. So I, I want to thank Lieutenant White and Mr. Chapman for this presentation. Lieutenant White, you brought up something which I was going to ask, and that was the six roadways. And I'm not sure if this is going to be for Mr. Chapman or Lieutenant White. One of the things that I was concerned about a few meetings ago when we talked about increasing the speed limit to Whitelock, and your presentation was excellent in educating us on the process. But one of the things I took a look at also was that Whitelock Parkway stretches over nearly four miles. And I actually took that drive to count how many street lights there were, and there are less than ten street lights. I think I counted correctly. What I've noticed is that because there are so few lights, it gives an opportunity for vehicles to be able to speed. And so my concern, as what I mentioned, that the, the last time we had this discussion, when we decided to increase the speed limit from thirty-five to forty-five based off of the traffic and engineering survey is that Whitelock Parkway covers several parks, it covers several schools, and it also is in an area of our Glenbrook, Del Webb community. And I know the residents there use the crosswalks, and they take walks there every morning as well. Now, we've seen on Whitelock Parkway that there have been several accidents, and we've also seen the loss of a young life. And so you gave the three options. I wasn't okay with those first two. And the third one, while I felt like that was good until it got to the point where we said speed control cannot be enforced, then I, I'm looking for what else can we do? Can we add more street lights? Because I'd like to see a way in which we can stop cars from speeding. I get that we have to do this survey every five years, but when you have lights that are so far apart, it gives the opportunity for cars to speed up. And if we do this again in the next five years after we've increased it to forty-five, I guarantee you, we're going to get to the point where we are going to be at sixty. And if we do this again in the next five years after we've increased it to forty-five, I guarantee you, we're going to get to the point where we are going to be at sixty-five. And it's going to be as if you're driving on the freeway on Whitelock Parkway. And I can't live with that as a mother of young kids, but as I walk and as I bike and as I drive down that way and see all the families. All the, the children, all the kids that are along that, that parkway and walking along the streets, what can we do? The last time I asked that, um, one of our council members says, there's nothing we can do. This is the law. But I don't, I don't want to take that, and I don't believe that. And so I'm looking to the both of you. What can we do?
Excellent questions, Vice Mayor.
Ryan, you want me to respond?
Yeah, if you could start.
Yeah, it falls probably more on the police part. So um, we've had, we've had this, you know, this discussion numerous times, you know, Whitelock Parkway. It's, it's no secret that's, that's a big concern. I would say that's our, our top concern. Um, we're, we're challenged with that street and we're looking at several different approaches. So. We break, every time we have a problem, we break down the three E's of traffic uh, safety. So we look at the engineering. What can we do different to that roadway? You know, in the last couple of years, we added the intersection that was there, right there at Whitelock and Knots. Um, we um. Uh, we, we've, we've discussed some other options, putting some more driver feedback signs up in different areas. Um, and then on the uh, on the education side, you know, we need to continue to put radar trailers out there. We need to continue use social media. We need to continue. One thing that we also do when, when we catch some of these fast drivers. Not just on Whitelock, but Waterman, other areas. We actually uh, take pictures. We have the officer take pictures of the LiDAR device to show the number. Sometimes it's a three-digit number, uh, sadly. And we use our, our PIOs to, to send that out and try to get that message out. For what happens. And a lot of those are reckless drivers. We tow the car. We tell the story. It's a thirty-day impound. It hits you in the pocket. Um, we do all those things. And, and one thing we talked about recently, you know, now that. You know, when, with everything that's happened with COVID, it's given us the opportunity to look at things. A little bit different. And now that we don't have school, onsite school right now, but we know, hopefully it's, it's coming later this year. Um, we, at least we hope. One thing we haven't done a very good job at, but we, we definitely are talking about it and looking forward to it is. Um, when school hours are, 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 when kids are going to school and when they're getting out of school, we've got a small window there. Where that speed limit changes to twenty-five miles an hour. And so I think we're going to target that at some of these schools, especially the ones on Whitelock and other areas. And we're going to hit that hard and see if we can have a stronger impact there. But, you know, we're going to continue having these discussions and looking at different. Options because we're not done yet. We're just getting started. Uh, and we're, we're committed to, to these problems. Ryan, did you want to add anything?
Um, yeah, so on the engineering side, I, you've identified a lot of. The challenges that Whitelock presents. There's very few intersections. And while the majority of them are signalized, there's just not a lot of. Cross-street traffic. There's a very straight road. I, I think the next step would be looking at installing a couple of permanent driver feedback signs at different locations.
Yeah, the, the only other thing I'd like to add, I mean, I've responded to almost all of these collisions that, that resulted in major injury and. You know, my heart goes out to the family every single time. They're, they're hard to respond to. Uh, there's definitely uh, some responsibility that you feel uh, because of what happened. Um, but every, every collision is, is different. And the only thing I ask is that we, we continue to keep an open mind and really look. At these one by one, and we, we look at the cause of these and. And try to come up with a strategy whi- that we feel is appropriate. And um, and we know we have some more work to do, and we're going to continue working on it. But, but the collisions we've had recently, uh, especially the ones on Whitelock Parkway, are quite a bit different from each other.
I see council member soon. Your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a follow-up question and then a comment. Um, Ryan, uh. With the uh, the straightaway, can we install uh, maybe some traffic chokers in there? So to narrow it down.
You know, I look at the, the lanes are al- already relatively narrow, considering that it is uh, arterial. And I don't have a lot of shoulders, so there's not a lot of limiting or reducing the pavement lanes. Or putting in a kind of chicane that really we could do.
Sorry, you broke up there, Ryan.
There, there isn't a lot of opportunity just because of the, the way the geometrics are set up. It's already a relatively narrow road with limited shoulders. So I can't really narrow it up more without going into a ten-foot wide lane. Which I don't think would support the bus and some of the commercial traffic we see on that road.
Yeah, so even though the, the, the narrowing would, would cause drivers to slow down, but from a safety perspective, you're hesitant. Uh, to, to do that.
Exactly.
I understand. Um, ju- ju- just a, a quick comment. Wanted to, to thank you, Officer White, for the presentation. And Ryan is, is always informative and, and a, just a good reminder in how these things are, are developed. They're just not pulled out, out of the air. Um, and I just wanted to give a shout out to uh, the Traffic Tip Thursday. You know, I, I know my wife and I. A lot of people I know really enjoyed those segments. Um, I hope you guys can bring that back soon.
We're working on it.
Good.
Uh, council members, Speeds or Hume, you're not showing up on my screen, so I don't know if you have a hand up or not.
All good over here, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Speeds?
Yes, all good here. That was a um, very thorough uh, presentation. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Officer White and, and Mr. Chapman. Excellent presentation. I echo the same concerns that Vice Mayor uh, Wynn raised. As it relates to Whitelock specifically, and we've had, what, three fatalities? Two from the same incident, and then a one earlier this summer. On the, with a bicycle, a bicyclist, young, young student. So I, I worry, and I know that uh, you know, based on the presentation, are, we, we are limited on some of the things we can do. But we do have um, some options, of course. And just having spoken at the young lady who lost her life, who um, she was a student who I've seen grow up. With my son. And, and I know, you know, very unique situation and um, the circumstances from, from some of the other incidents that have occurred. But I can tell you as a, as a commuting mom, when I used to take my children to school at Kasumus Oaks. And just driving not only to, but coming back and just seeing um. The near tragic accidents just in the span of just a few months. Uh, it's, it's very concerning. And I know that, you know, I mean, education is, is excellent, but it's only one option. Um, seeing more enforcement, um, getting tickets. And I, you know, if we have some bad actors out there that are speeding excessively and creating dangerous conditions. Um, I think that that's an option. But I am a definitely a supporter of the signs of, of that showcase the speed. I forget what, what you call it technically, um, internally. What is the name of that? Just the, you know, I'm talking about?
Yeah, the driver feedback signs.
Yeah, so whatever your speed is, it, it flashes. Um. Just as a reminder that, you know, that the speed is excessive, and like Vice Mayor Wynn mentioned. The opportunities for that high speed are pretty great, and those crosswalks that are between the lights. Particularly as you're getting past, I guess if you're going east on Whitelock after Bru- uh, big, after Bruceville. Those are some dangerous areas because there's really not opportunities for safe crossing. Uh, even though we have the crosswalk and the, and the flashing lights. That's where we, we lost a, a student. And I've seen personally, like, little collisions over the course of the years. It's just driving my kids to school. So just, you know, going back to what else can we do? Because that corridor is a concern, and I'm glad to hear that it is one of your top. Um, areas that you're looking into, but. You know, what can we do? Because it's just, it is so heartbreaking when we see a loss of life. Um, even if their circumstances are unique, I, I know that speed. From some part, uh, it does play a role, or not being able to see the motor, uh, or the crossing bicyclist. Um, what can we do to alarm? Sometimes the flashing lights aren't enough. Um, so just, you know, I, I know that you're doing the best that you can, but just know that. That, that corridor continues to be an area where I get a number of constituent concerns and complaints. And it's something that I've seen over the course of, you know, just taking my kids to school and. Just driving along those roads, is how dangerous it actually can be. So I'm just, I appreciate that you're, you're, it's on your radar, and whatever we can do to mitigate that as much as possible. So that when we do go back to school, uh, which is right around the corner. Um, it's only going to amplify even more. So, but thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, um, with that, we will go ahead and move on to our next item.
And that next item will be ten point two, which is receive information and provide direction on the proposed revisions to the non-exclusive commercial solid waste collection requirements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Can everybody hear me okay and see my screen?
Indeed, audio, visual, all functioning. Please proceed.
Thank you so much. So the item before you this evening is regarding the um, non-exclusive commercial solid waste collection program. This is actually a follow-up item to a presentation that we did for you last, last April. Where we provided a status update on the SB thirteen eighty-three regulations. Which is the um, requirement to implement mandatory organic waste recycling. At that time, we were seeking direction on several related policy questions. And council indicated that they would like additional information on the proposal for the commercial solid waste service before providing a recommendation. Before I dive into that though, I'd like to provide just a really brief overview of SB thirteen eighty-three. For the benefit of our new council members who may not have been able to see that presentation. SB thirteen eighty-three was approved in twenty sixteen, and it requires all jurisdictions to implement organic waste collection programs. To divert organic waste from landfill disposal. And the state's goal with this is to reduce the amount of greenhouse gases that are emitted from organic waste as it decom. Excuse me, decomposes in the landfill. The legislation also sets a goal of recovering twenty percent of edible food that may otherwise be thrown away. The requirements will apply to all generators of organic waste. That includes residents and businesses. Currently, only certain businesses are required to separate and recycle their organic waste. The regulations require jurisdictions to mandate compliance and to implement a number of programs that include public outreach. Enforcement, record-keeping, reporting, and other similar programs. These all have to be in place by January first of twenty twenty-two. So just a heads up that you'll be seeing a lot more of us over the course of the next year, as we start finalizing all those programs and bringing them forward for approval. And then finally, the legislation authorizes local jurisdictions to charge fees to recover costs to comply with these regulations. So moving into the question for this evening. Um, the city of Elk Grove currently has a non-exclusive franchise hauling system for the commercial sector. And what that means is that a business can choose any hauler to provide. Any or all three services. They could have one hauler for trash, another for recycling, a third for organics, or one hauler for all three of those. This allows businesses a, the opportunity to shop around for the best pricing. To uh, for each of those services, so they can get the overall best package available. However, this also creates a couple of disadvantages. Uh, namely because we have to verify compliance for each business individually and report that information to the state. It requires significant efforts um, on the part of staff to go through and do that verification annually. Some kind, sometimes it has taken a couple of weeks. Sometimes it's taken months. It sort of depends on how many things are changing, how many businesses are moving. Um, one unintended consequence of how long it takes to verify that compliance is that. To some extent, it creates a little bit of an uneven playing field for businesses who may not already be compliant. And what I mean by that, um, for an example, let's say we have two businesses that are uh, competitors, fast food businesses. Restaurant A, we may go and verify their compliance in March of one year, and we find that they're not compliant with organics. So we go through the process, bring them into compliance. They're now paying an additional cost every month for organic waste collection service. Restaurant B, due to the, all of the other businesses that we have to go and verify. We may not get to them till the following week, the following month, maybe six months later. And so Restaurant A is paying for an additional service for six months that Restaurant B hasn't been paying for. So it creates a little bit of a disparity in that regard. We've estimated the amount of staff time that was spent doing this compliance tracking in twenty twenty, and it's approximately fifty-two thousand dollars in staff time. So following our last meeting in April, we, we had originally proposed a change to the system. That would require businesses to select a single hauler for all three services with no exceptions. They would still get to choose one of our haulers, but they could only choose one for all three. Following that meeting, as we've gone out and started gathering additional information for council and um, doing some more research. We've been paying attention to what our neighboring jurisdictions are doing. At least two have already implemented. Um, programs to address just this issue. And so we've been watching how their implementation is going. Learning from their uh, opportunities and challenges along the way. And so we slightly revised our proposal, and we think we brought back something to um, council. That achieves a goal of streamlining, but also maintains choice for local businesses. So to review that proposal. By default, haulers would have to provide all three services to all of their customers, their, their business customers. However, customers that still wish to use multiple haulers. Or to self-haul their own recyclables to a recycling facility, or to backhaul to a distribution center. Would then have to submit and complete an alternative compliance form. This would be a free electronic form on our website, fairly straightforward. They would then share this with their haulers. The haulers have to um, file and uh, keep this information, track their compliance. And then include it in their annual reports. The form would have to be submitted within thirty days of the start of service for new business customers. Or prior to a grace period deadline for existing customers. And we would propose that deadline to be January one of twenty twenty-two, so they have pretty much the rest of twenty twenty-one to come into compliance. And then any customers that refuse to put in place all of the three required services, trash, recycling, and organics. Or those that haven't submitted an alternative compliance uh, form within the deadline, would then be referred to the city for enforcement action. Um, we feel that this will significantly reduce the amount of staff time needed, because instead of having to cross-rex- cross-reference various data sources. To verify compliance for each business, instead, everything will be included in the annual hauler report. So we feel that this is the optimal solution that will greatly streamline our annual compliance effort. Create a lot more efficiency at staff level, but also maintain that element of choice. And for our customers, our business customers, so that they can still shop around and get the best price for their service. So given that, we are recommending that you, that council direct staff to revise the Elk Grove Municipal Code. To require a three-bin solid waste service as the default, but include options for alternative compliance as recommended. And then just a note that we have already started a broader update of Title Thirty. Which is the solid waste portion of Elk Grove Municipal Code to include all of the various requirements of SB thirteen eighty-three. And so if the recommended action is approved, we would incorporate the, the proposed changes from this evening into that existing Title Thirty. Update that's in progress, and we would present the entire code section at a future meeting for council approval. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Um, at this time, I will open the public comment opportunity.
And for item ten point two, we don't have uh, too many attendees in the Zoom environment, but just put it out there that if folks do have any comments. Put up the raise hand function, and it does not appear, as though anyone's putting up the raise hand function for item ten point two, that'll conclude our public comment on the item.
All right, then I will close the public comment opportunity. And turn it over to my council colleagues. Any questions? Uh, don't send me raised hands. I'll just go one by one. I suppose might be easier. Councilmember Speeds?
I, I don't have any questions. Um, thank you for the um, for the presentation. Um, I think staff's recommendation is, is reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I feel like I've been fighting some version.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I feel like I've been fighting some version of this provision going all the way back to the very early days when Cedar Kehoe was our, our waste manager. You know, it's, it's a, it's a tough thing for businesses when you're talking about the commercial haulers, because there's a physical environment as well as just the service provided. As far as where you're going to keep each of the bins, they have to be in enclosures, all of these other things. And so, you know, a lot of these retroactive, or what I'll call retroactive provisions being foisted upon local communities by the state regulations, there are real-world implications behind those. And if you don't think that they can create a hotbed of ill will towards the local government, our folks down just to the south of us, and City Manager Bearman can attest to this, got really up in arms because their businesses, I don't remember the exact number, but it was like a 300% rate increase in order to comply with, with these provisions because they had a single commercial hauler. They didn't have any kind of choice made available to them. So I, I say all of that just as a lead in. At this point, I, I feel like I'm just kind of holding back the flood and that it's a futile effort that is, is coming whether I, whether I continue to voice protestation or not. And so Heather, I certainly appreciate the work you've put into this, and I, I'm not faulting you in any way for trying to figure out the best way and most efficient way for the city to track the information that we will be required to, to report out to the state. But I just, I still, my, the hair on the back of my neck stands up a little bit on all of this because it's, it's just, it's never as easy as, as it is with a stroke of a pen when it comes down to making it happen in the real world. So that's all I have, but I, I won't make any other objection other than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent points. Council member, soon?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions. Also concur with staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Win?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either. I definitely thank Council member Hume for his input. Thank you for your presentation and definitely support your, your recommendations.
Thank you.
All right. With that, looks like we are at the end of our evening here. And I will officially adjourn our meeting at 8:38. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.